I'd like to call the order, the June 8th meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
McLeanany.
Here.
All here, if you all rise and join us in the club.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the agenda. We have deletion on the presentation number two. Paramatic is out on call, so won't be joining.
New approval with deletion of two?
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Our agenda is approved. Next, we have assistant presentation, and this provides anyone with the opportunity to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here in the council chambers this evening wanting to address us on an item that is not on the agenda? And Pete, do we have anyone online?
No, your honor.
Well, we do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so I'll just remind everyone of our operating principles. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote model principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting all our work, we expect that everyone will act in a respectful manner consistent with these. First item up is a presentation on the Green Belt Music Festival, and Amanda?
Good evening, mayor and council. As you said, tonight, we do have the follow-up presentation for the Green Belt Music Festival. Tariq Lundey is the booking and operations manager for Horizon Event Center, and he is going to be filling us in tonight on how everything went. So I'll have Tariq come up, give the presentation.
Thank you, Amanda. Space bar just moves through here.
I think that's over arrow, over or down.
Ah, okay. So, Green Belt Music Festival, obviously, we were here maybe eight months ago, asking for permission to have this festival in celebration of Clive, finding a good use for our kind of acreage next to us on the grass, and just kind of bringing some entertainment to this part of the land. We named it Green Belt in celebration of Clive. A big part of this was donating $5 of every ticket sold to the Clive Community Foundation to directly benefit the Green Belt Landing Project. Happy to announce that on July 27th, that their council meeting, board meeting, we'll be presenting them with $8,855 for year one. We're pretty excited about that. We're excited to hopefully get your permission to come back at it. We'll start this presentation as fairly quick, but just kind of showing you where we ranged and how we went about our process. To start, we had, you can see on the map here, we had attendees from Omaha all the way to San Diego, from across the country. We did most of our marketing within the Midwest states, and obviously a heavy focus on Des Moines and Eastern Iowa as well. But the word got out with guests like Here Come the Mummies and infamous string dusters, Grammy nominees. People were pretty excited with the eclectic lineup, and we thought sticking with, you know, it wasn't fully bluegrass, but sticking with that bluegrass theme would hopefully be a little more inviting to our neighbors as well as far as sound. And we figured out some great parking, and hopefully we didn't have too many complaints in that realm as well. This is just, if you have links on your page, just a little bit of media coverage. We were able to gain a lot of earned media. We saw the mayor pop up on some of those interviews. That helped push the word, but more importantly, you know, put Clive on the map in general. A lot of these links that you click into says Clive is bringing a festival, not Horizon Event Center, not Tariq, the City of Clive, and I think that was the whole purpose of this, is naming it after Green Belt, putting the recognition on Clive. Would love to see the City of Clive as a sponsor on this next year. That's my sales manager side talking. But, you know, getting that recognition that is not about Waukees, Ankeny, East Village, there is Clive. Our main street is the Green Belt Music Fest- or the Green Belt Trail, and this music festival will help hopefully grow that name as well. Community feedback. We have a quote in here from Mayor John Edwards, "When you bring thousands of music lovers into the city, they're going to be using restaurants around the area, they'll be using hotels." So just a very positive economic impact. Thank you for that. That helped us, I believe that aired the day before, the first day of the festival. That helped a lot of the walk-up. I think people, originally, and ticket sales, we didn't see, we saw tickets from Omaha and Missouri and San Diego. We didn't see a lot of City of Clive addresses on our Eventbrite, and we're trying to figure out what that was. The Clive Community Foundation helped us by sending out posters and everything else in the electric bill, but we still felt a little pushback from the actual residents. And I think the endorsement from the mayor and just some of the Channel 8, Channel 13, Channel 5, Des Moines Register exposure for the city kind of helped some of those locals come out the day of and just pique their curiosity a little bit, as opposed to just being totally against it from the beginning. And I think you'll see from the next page that they all kind of enjoyed it. As I mentioned, $8,885 went to the Clive Community Foundation, going to them next month in a presentation. Casey's gas station next door was packed all weekend long. They are now asking us to give them a schedule of all of our events because they're packed whenever we are packed. Hard America was our hotel partner. I know a lot of their hotel, Renovo and Rebel, are actually in Urbandale, but I also understand that there's a hotel tax being shared between the communities. So I do think that benefited the city as well, along with Wildwood, which was packed. State Track was in town as well, and a lot of that Drake Community Foundation came over our way as well afterwards. So I thought it was a big impact on that weekend. Social media feedback. You'll see lots of lots of screenshots from social media. I flew from San Diego forward, totally worth it. I hope I can add Green Belt Music Festival to my yearly docket of favorite music festivals to attend. A lot of those going around. I think the biggest thing that we saw and that we took pride in was the family-friendly atmosphere. We had the goats out there, thanks to Matt. We had some laser tag. We had children, 12 and under, enter free, and I think me, myself, having a 10 and six-year-old daughter, I know that extra two tickets now makes it over $100 for my family to go, having those two enter free, and then having activities for them like Silent Disco. Silent Disco was actually for the adults. The kids were kind of taking over that area. It was kind of a place where parents just pushed their kids as a babysitter, but it worked out well. Everyone got to enjoy, parents got to meet new friends and enjoy new music, and we're very proud of that, and we expect to continue that children enter free as we move forward. Some of our sponsors. Exile Brewing was our presenting sponsor. They also were our Can't Count Cocktail sponsor, they have their bus out there. They did a bike ride from Exile on that Saturday to the Green Belt Festival. They also had, if you showed your ticket that morning at Exile, you got weekday happy hour prices. And then they brought about 30 people on bikes. They were also excited that we had a bike valet outside, so we tried to encourage people not to use our parking, use the trail. We'll make sure we valet your bike when you get there, and that became a big success. We actually made it double the size on Saturday because it got so packed so fast on Friday. So some of the things that we will grow with, but we thought was a big impact with us. Fire Trucker Brewing, Weatherwax Law Firm, with the GOAT sponsorship, greatest of all time sponsorship. We named our VIP area the GOAT. You got a free chair, free lawn chair, those sponsored by Weatherwax, so we allow people to bring in a lawn chair, subject to search. But we gave them a free chair if they made that extra push to spend a little more money and get in front of the stage. And little things like that, I think, really got people excited about, you know, the future of the Green Belt. All the way down to Iowa Native Trees was the Bike Valet sponsor, who was selling trees and plants that grow locally to Iowa, and they had a great success there as well. Some of our vendors, chiropractors, Vipit Mobile, JP Rentals, Top Level Suites, Pure Light. As I mentioned, I would love to see City of Clive on here next year, if we're allowed to do it next year. I think your impact, kind of convincing the city and endorsing it, along with some support of other things you guys can bring that the city does, would be a big part, but US Marines, we already have Army and National Guard reaching out and seeing if we're going to do it again next year. They would like to be out there, so great recruiting opportunities for some of those perspectives. Food vendors are already reaching out, local artists are already reaching out, so I think the impact in general of just the feeling of how great it was, obviously, we had, we got lucky with the weather, especially on Saturday. That's always going to be an impact on how things go, but I think we picked that week before Memorial Day because we knew it could be 90 degrees, it could be a snowstorm, but we're better suited for going before Memorial Day weekend. That's it for the presentation. One of the things, Gary, who's in Jamaica, lucky him, he wanted me to touch on is just some of the economic impacts. So, you know, obviously, the hotels, Casey's, the restaurants, the donation to the foundation for the Green Belt Trail. But the whole purpose of this was a proof of concept, best use of this location. We purchased this location to make it a parking lot because we needed more parking for, to access to use all of our buildings. I think now we figured out that we don't necessarily want to make it a parking lot, and we hope you don't either. There's things like car shows, farmers markets, food truck Fridays, carnivals, obviously, music festivals and other things that we would love to bring out there. And with your support and your help, I think we can make it a great asset to the Green Belt Trail, and to Horizon Event Center, and more importantly, the City of Clive. That's all I got.
Questions for Tariq?
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead.
Great job. You know, I think we didn't have many complaints, you know, just a little bit here and there, but that, I think that's to be expected overall. From what I've heard from the residents that did go, they really enjoyed it, and then I had a number of residents who said they can't wait to go next year because they weren't able to this year, and they didn't find out about it until till late, so just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you. I do want to mention one of the things, you know, we we do care about our neighbors, and we do know that outdoor music is going to be loud and amplified. We did take sound, we took it across the Green Belt Trail, we took it over the hill to the houses that you mentioned last time, and we were measuring sound out there, making sure it never hit that limit. I checked in with lieutenant, he let me know we did have three or four complaints by Saturday happened. I think one of them was anonymous, another one, someone who was pushing to not have the festival at all anyway. But we know that the complaints are going to happen, but we did make our best effort to, you know, make sure it was respectful to the neighbors. And I think the point of us being here today is to try to get that permission to do next year, so I can go out there and start making these bids on these artists now, save a little money, get a little bigger, larger artists, so we can start promoting it by this fall and really take it to the next level.
All right. Tariq, overall, positive feedback, obviously, there's, you know, some folks that didn't like the festival and certainly understand their concerns as well. What kind of tweaks? What would you do differently for next year? You know, as you want, as we look at this event, it's an inaugural event, what would you do differently and how would you tweak it?
There's a few different things we do differently. I think marketing, we would love to announce this event a little sooner than in January or February, when we announced it this past year. And that will also give us a little more opportunity to do a little community outreach. You know, last year, we invited the community, including the mayor. I believe we sent out 177 mailed letters directly to homes of people who can vote in city council and said, hey, meet the neighbor night. We're the new owners and management of Horizon Event Center, we're going to tell you a secret. We let them know that we're having an outdoor festival, wanted to hear their qualms, wanted to hear their positive thoughts on it, and what they thought about our property in general. I think this allows us to do that again, but also allows us to do some marketing to push out to them, to let them know why this is going to be good for the community and how we're going to respect their ears. I think some other things we're going to do is a little more sound testing past the Woodsmith Building, seeing how it affects Urbandale. I know we don't care about them, but we also we also want to make sure we're respecting them, so anything doesn't push back on that end as well. And then reaching out to early parking partners. We hope to get larger. We know that our original parking lot right now won't eventually hold everyone. We do have parking with the Woodsmith Building side. We try to reserve that for emergency vehicles and for the vendors. Reached out to the Living History Farm and Valley West Mall. They're not quite sure what's going to happen with Valley West Mall over the next few years, but they also offered that even if it is apartments, they're willing to let us use the parking there, as long as we handle the snow plowing or anything like that over there. So I think some of those early concerns would be the sound, the parking, and the marketing and community outreach, and I think us being able to get a little quicker jumpstart on this will allow me to get out there and get ahead of that.
Jason?
I really regretted being out of town the weekend when this was held because I had wanted to come. But I just want to thank you for the generous donation to the Clive Community Foundation. That was a really phenomenal partnership. I know how grateful they are, and it really, really did have a big impact that's positive for the community and for the foundation as well, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I believe you reached out last time I was standing up here and said, have you talked to Clive Community Foundation? And I reached out that next day, and Bob Porte came in the next week, and we'd love to know, we wanted to make a donation, we didn't know how, but I think make a portion of tickets sold, put the pressure on the City of Clive and residents to buy tickets to support themselves, and put the pressure on us to really make it worth it for you guys. We didn't want to just hand you a $200 check and say, ha, we're back. You know, really want to make it, make an impact, and we were serious when we said, you know, the Green Belt Park, which is the last part of that trail project, is where my kids play, and it needs to be redeveloped, and it butts up to us, and the Green Belt Trail is Clive's main street. So we think that's a big part of who Horizon is. We're looking forward to some big updates with Horizons, and I think the trail being updated is a big part of how we can grow as well. So thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, I will say at the beginning, I was one of the skeptics, right?
Yeah.
And I told you that I really wanted, even up on the hill, checked where, you know, where I live, and my neighbors talk to me often about some of the old concerts prior to your ownership. Well done.
Thank you.
My wife and I had dinner out on our back deck both nights. You could hear the music, but it wasn't that bass that you promised not to have. It wasn't the, you know,
rattling the chandelier.
noxious, right? It was, and it ended when you said it was going to end.
10:00 PM on the
We all knew that it was coming, and so it was respectful, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for checking it out. Love those, that input.
So at least from the consensus I'm seeing here, I'm not seeing any objections to try to do this again next year. So I see heads nodding, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We'll see you next year.
Engage those neighbors again.
We will, all the way up to the hill. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else on this topic? Otherwise, we'll move into consent. I think we did get some objections from community members, and it might be appropriate just to make sure that those are part of the record. Excellent. So, all right. Anything else on the topic? Seeing none, we'll move to consent, which requires a resolution.
Okay.
Motion is. Charity one. So we have a motion, a second. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post those vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next, we have a presentation from Richard.
Thank you. Well, I'm pleased tonight to be able to introduce the newest Parks Operations Specialist. Brent Kenninger started on Monday, and we're very, very excited to have him. One of the things that we're trying to do a little bit more is find people that fit some of the skillsets that maybe we're missing, and I know we've talked about it a lot here about the need to get into the green infrastructure, the stormwater and the natural resource management. So we're very, very excited because Brent comes to us with an extensive background in natural resource management, so with that, I'm happy to introduce him.
Hello?
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Brent Kenninger. Thank you for the introduction. So yeah, I'm happy to be here. Started on Monday with the Parks Division, and love bringing my skillset to the City of Clive, especially with water, water development and retention basins, bioswells, timber stand improvements, prairie restorations, wetland restorations, all of that. So I look forward to bringing what I can to the City of Clive, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Should have plenty of work for you.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we'll move to the action items. First, we have a public hearing on Metta View. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
We did publish in the Des Moines Register on May 26, 2023.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. So the construction out at the Metta View Senior Housing is nearing completion, hopefully with an opening yet this month. So with that, they're finishing up their final site stabilization installation of all the last stormwater type details, and there is a portion of their storm sewer pipe that outlets into the city's Schuler Pond that was reviewed and considered as part of the site plan and preliminary plat process and stormwater management plan. So this is just the formal creation of that easement that the city would grant to the property owner, is that is their pipe for maintenance. So it's our pretty typical easement document, and that is the subject of the public hearing tonight.
Questions for Amanda?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
The motion, and a second to close public hearing. Before we do, is there anyone in the chamber who wishes to address us on this matter? Seeing no one, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And the motion to close public hearing passes by a vote of five.
Resolution granting private storm sewer easement.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next, we have a public hearing on Cirxina Park construction. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
We published in the Des Moines Register on May 24, 2023.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you. So we're back tonight to talk about Cirxina Park. Based on the direction that we got from the council back in March and April, we worked with the design team at RDG to repackage the Cirxina Park items into one bid package, and were able to put that back out and receive bids on May 31st. We were able to receive one bid from Corel Contractors Incorporated. Their bid was for $799,952. That base bid is approximately 15% over the engineer's estimate of what we thought this might cost. We also had three alternates there. The first was for $37,800, and that was for what we were looking at to see how much it might cost to have a company help us establish that landscape over a year. The second one was for the rubber play surface. The way the base bid worked is we had that as mulch, but we wanted to see how much the rubber would cost, knowing that's probably the route we wanted to go, but in case it was too high, we wanted to have the opportunity to reject that. And finally, alternate three was for $39,465, and that was for additional color in some of the bioswales and planting areas there beyond kind of some of the seeded areas. So that was something that we felt would be kind of icing on top of it if we had a good bid for the overall project. After talking to RDG and conferring with Engineering Department on the bids, we wanted to see if that made sense, having only one bid, being 15 to 16% over the engineer's estimate, it makes sense to recommend that to the council. After talking to RDG and talking to Jim Hoggley in the Engineering Department, we believe that it is a fair bid. Almost half of that 15% is from a first couple items related to topsoil and grading out there. And Jim was able to go back and see some of the most recent bids that they have had for some of their projects, and that lined up pretty well with that. So based on that alone, we feel like it is a fair bid, and so our recommendation is approval of a contract for the base bid, rejecting the maintenance bid. Now that we're starting to get some staff like Brent on board, we feel like that's something that the park staff can do, so we can save the money there. Awarding the rubber bid that was at or below what RDG estimated that to be, and that's kind of the standard moving forward for our playgrounds. And then finally rejecting the third alternate for the splash of color. We believe that's something that as we have extra plans with some of our other projects, we can slowly fill that in over the next few years. So that would leave a contract of $879,220. Our recommendation of staff would be to approve that contract so that we can get going with Cirxina Park item. Additionally, beyond that, one of the things we did to try, do to try to save money, should the council approve this contract tonight, we will come back at your next meeting with a contract for the purchase of the playground equipment. What we were able to do is find a consortium that will allow us to get the playground equipment 5% below what the list price is, so we don't, we get, we save that, plus we save a markup that a contractor would have put in their bid, so we'll save about $35,000 with that. So just another item that would be coming forward next week, or your next meeting, should you approve the contract tonight.
Good. Questions for Richard? Ted?
So on that playground equipment, Richard, is that, was that still kind of the nature scape type playground, not, not just typical swing set and?
Yep, it's the exact, the exact equipment that has been shown to all the neighborhood in neighborhood meetings. Yep. What we struggled to do for a little bit while is kind of a hidden consortium that we may be able to find, where they prebid it with all sorts of playground companies at a lower price than they usually get for retail, so it wasn't something
Make sure we're not doing a bait and switch with the neighbor.
Nope.
All that.
Yes, correct. It matches up to all the exact photos we've shown the neighborhood.
Right on.
That was my question.
Michael, on that pricing, so we're 15% over on the construction piece. If you add, was the price of the equipment included in that originally? And so are we actually over the additional equipment piece as well, right? Because?
Yeah, so it was originally in the original bids. And so one of the things that we wanted to try to do is find ways to save as much money as possible when we repackage this together. And so prior to getting that bid out, we were able to find that consortium that would save us some money.
So what do we over total on this project?
It's probably
Plus the
Yeah, so it's probably in the, if you want a dollar amount, it's probably in the neighborhood of about $200,000. But talking with Matt prior to his departure for vacation, and a couple ways we wanted to look at it potentially is either, he said, there's potentially some money with the premium that was done with the most recent bond, or we're looking at potentially delaying the start of the design for the Porter Shelter project just because of the amount of additional projects we have in the queue right now. That could stand to potentially be pushed back before we get going on that, and so maybe we could use some of that design money to cover this shortage, and then we look at when the best time to do that in the next budget cycle. Certainly, we'll have to wait till he's back to figure out exactly how he wants to handle that.
Go ahead. Yeah, I, I'm, I think we need to move forward with it, but what I want to make sure, and maybe I wish Matt was here for this, but you know, the Porter Shelter is on the docket to be maybe held. Was there any discussion of Lanan or any piece of Lanan Park being
No.
held off financially for this piece?
No.
Okay.
You know, better not.
Right. Just wanted the record.
Richard, what's our total cost on this Cirxina Park project roughly?
Yeah, so with the base, the contract we're recommending tonight is $879. The playground equipment via the neighborhood of $70,000. And then we'll probably have another small contract with RDG for construction administration. We're still working that out with coal, so I would guess in the neighborhood of about $30,000 there, so probably just under a million dollars.
When's the start?
So they could start anytime after the contracts approve. It was really going to depend on what their schedule's looking like. They will have till the end of May 2024 to get it done. We're hoping that they'll get going this summer sometime, but we can give you an update after we have a chance to talk to them.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion, a second to close public hearing, but before we do, is there anyone in the chamber who wishes to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And the public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
With the resolution proven, plans and specs.
Second.
Motion, a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Receive the bids.
Second.
Motion, a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? Bids are received by a vote of five to zero.
With the resolution, would the contract to Corel Contractor in for $879,220 and 20 cents?
Second.
Further discussion.
I'm just really pleased that we're able to do the rubber for the playground. I'm very happy about that.
Good move. Any further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. All right, Amanda, you're back with us to talk about Quickstar.
Yes. So tonight, we do have before you the site plan and preliminary plat consideration for what many of you probably know as the old Carroll Crate property at 15980 Hickman Road. That is an old residential kind of farmhouse estate. It has been in the city for quite some time now and was actually zone commercial back in 1997. So now that Ms. Crate has passed and her estate is being closed, Quickstar/QuickTrip is proposing to redevelop that commercial site with one of their convenience stores. It does include a, excuse me, a single bay attached car wash with that as well. And they have provided basic sound study information that staff has reviewed in association with that. And then, of course, the fuel canopy, and I believe it's 10 double-sided fuel tanks. One item that's not yet reflected on the plan set here is there's also a single vacuum cleaner that's originally shown in this location. Based on feedback at the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, though, Quickstar readily agreed just to shift that east to get larger separation from the Waukees residents that do live across the street there. We did have a lot of public engagement. We did have a lot of public engagements throughout the whole process. Lots of questions from both the commercial neighbors and the residential neighbors, as well as a lot of written comments that were included in your packet and a very healthy attendance at the Plan and Zoning meeting. I think it's really a testament to how well Quick Star and the neighbors were able to work together that we don't have a house full tonight. So they have been able to address a lot of those concerns. So I'll just do a quick recap of what the primary themes were that staff heard throughout that. Of course, there was concerns with privacy and safety associated with a commercial business going into that location. Concerns with stormwater management. I will note that the townhomes to the south here, their stormwater does flow. And per the modern stormwater management requirements, Quick Star is picking up that additional site flow. So there should not be any negative impact on that existing surface water flowage condition. There were also concerns raised about lighting. Quick Star was very responsive to staff's recommendations on lighting standards. The only thing that staff's been recommending that they weren't able to meet on site with that is the site uniformity statistics. That is really difficult for a commercial site that kind of has distinct areas, particularly with it being along Hickman Road and having to provide the multiple sidewalk connection locations. So staff doesn't have significant concern with that site uniformity that is included in the draft development standards manual that staff has been working on, but it is indicated as targets, not absolute requirements. And they are pretty close if you kind of chunk out the different portions of the site for that. So Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with their latest lighting proposal. And for as far as the foot candles, there is really no foot candles within this landscape buffer area at all. So it's truly just the ambient lighting that is created with a commercial corridor that'll be impacting the neighbors. Another concern that we did hear was with the access to the site. Council is aware that there will be improvements to Southeast Legacy Point Boulevard, as well as the signal that is, I don't believe they've started work yet. I think the start date is July first, when they could start on the signal installation at one hundred and sixty-first and Hickman Road. So with the timing of the Quick Star, they're actually not intending to start construction until twenty twenty-four. So they have worked with staff to kind of align those construction timeframes that will allow for the design and bid associated with the road improvement to, so the store will not be opening prior to completion of that. They're targeting opening around October, November of twenty-four. And we would anticipate that the road end date on the contract would be completion by October first of twenty-four. So we shouldn't have a large influx of traffic creating challenges at this location. Additionally, that median right in this area is being closed as part of that signal installation project is what's required by the DOT. So that will reduce another conflict point there, and this entrance will be just a right and right out into the site. Sorry, some kids having a good time out there. Additionally, though, the townhomes that are located to the west here, also in Waukees and part of a commercial PUD, they did raise some concerns with the location of this driveway access that it aligns directly with their private street. They do have signage there indicating that it is not a through street, and they, the residents reported challenges with delivery vehicles for like Stivers and Earl May using that as a cut through. So Quick Star did respond with the resident request that they would be willing to place a sign indicating left and right movements only. However, you know, that intersection is going to be up here, and that sign would be approximately, you know, that kind of location. So staff's recommendation is actually that Clive and Waukees jointly consider, based on the final road design, if a sign in the median directing traffic would be more appropriate. That way, when drivers are actually stopped where they're going to make their turn movement, they'll be able to see the sign rather than having it be behind their car. So we agreed with Quick Star that it's probably not very effective on their site, but they did say they're willing to put one in if that is desired to be a requirement.
Amanda, would that sign then be a future cost to Quick Star, which I think would be appropriate?
It could probably be included in the, the full road pricing if it was in, in the median there. It wouldn't substantially impact, you know, it would be like a typical traffic directional sign. But yeah, the, the public improvements agreement includes the opinion of probable cost with a not to exceed number. That's based on our requirement that commercial would have to provide half of the equivalent of a local street for fifteen point five feet. Rather than they, we don't really have a way to charge them for like the full collector arterial standards. That local road equivalent is what has been, I guess, tried and true through various developments. So that is the same standard that we apply on our other commercial or residential plats, even when it is a more substantial street going in. So yes, that can be included in the final costs, but with that limitation on how much we're able to charge back, it probably wouldn't really make a significant difference.
Wouldn't exceed the max, right? It would, we'd still be under the max that we could charge back with the sign is what you're saying. I, I know I'm talking about dollars here, but I think i- if it's their cost, it's their cost, right? If we need to put it in before and they need to put it, you know, where you just mark.
Yeah.
It's coming later, it still should be their cost.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it would be included in, in the larger road construction. So we would, we would still have the same not to exceed number in the agreement. But if the sign was part of that and then did not exceed their portion.
But why would it, I'm nitpicking a couple hundred dollars here, but why would it be in part of that when they would put it in here and it wouldn't be in part of that if they put it in advance of the intersection? Now that we say it's okay to put to the, to medium, it's suddenly part our cost, part their cost. I mean, that's just, to me, a basic, it's their cost.
Sure.
Side of the agreement of the percentage of what we split.
So if it was.
Be theirs at the beginning.
If it was onsite, it would be like your typical directional sign, like, you know, ATM this way.
Right.
That kind of design, if it was in the median, it would actually be like a typical road street sign that would be directing traffic. So it would just be part of that.
For that median sign? Separate from the share?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, indicating yes.
Oh, good. Oh, good?
Yep.
We just negotiated.
So of course, we don't have the full road design at this point. I believe that is under contract and in the works. So we don't know exactly where the medians and everything would be located. So that is why we, we would need to evaluate it with the road design to make sure it was appropriate and located in a place that would actually be effective before requiring it. So. That was the bulk of the public comments, aside from some concern with requests for a fence on the property line to the south. But Quick Star has actually come to an agreement with the townhomes located in the south to Waukees that they will pay for the townhomes to have a privacy fence installed on their property. It becomes difficult really to place it on the Quick Star property. One, it would impact the number of trees we could fit in the typical buffer. But also there are utilities, the sanitary sewer line will have to go through that area to make the connection. And we would not allow the substantial commercial type fence that have been required in covenants of some other commercial developments to cross that line. So it would actually end up providing less coverage for the townhomes if it was placed on the Quick Star property. But they have accommodated here a pretty substantial berm with our typical fifty-foot landscape buffer plantings, even though the neighbors are in Waukees and not Clive. We still carried forward that typical landscaping buffer requirement.
And what's the height of that berm? I know I saw some of the notes there that there's some recommendations. Could you address that a little bit?
Yep. So it depends where you measure from. So if you're measuring from the townhome side and right adjacent to the berm, it's around the typical three to four feet in height. Of course, the berm kind of tapers off as it gets to the edges there. But I believe if you're measuring from like the gas pumps, you're more in the six to seven foot range, if not even a little higher from the, the peak of the berm.
Neighborhood happy with that?
It's a mix, honestly. Not everyone is completely satisfied. But I do think there was a general recognition that it is a commercial zone site, and there really is only so much height that can be accommodated with grading. And without impacting the, the townhomes' surface water flowage that would have a negative potential on their units.
Next question was on signage. Signage, it seemed like they have very heavy on the signage right there. Comply with our comply ordinance on signage?
It does, yeah. Their, their building mounted signage that includes what they're allowed to have on the gas canopy does fall within the two hundred square feet of signage that they would be allotted to have that's building mounted. They have not placed any of the typical like Quick Star signage on this backside closest to these neighbors. They do have some kind of directional signs pointing you to the car wash in that area. A little bit mounted on the building, a few posts on kind of like the typical, you know, ATM this way type sign. But yes, they are meeting that. They did include a red LED strip on the canopy that is their typical branding. And we don't have anything that would prohibit that kind of lighting since it is covered. It's not just an exposed diode. So it doesn't have kind of that extreme brightness impact like you might see in some other businesses in other communities that have the very bright lights that are shining out of the windows. So it won't have that kind of impact.
Final question here. Have we done a photoelectric study here on the outdoor lighting right there and how that'll impact the neighborhood as well? And what staff's recommendation on that?
Yep. So Quick Star did provide the photometric plan, statistics, and all of their manufacturer cut sheets. So they are almost entirely in compliance with staff's recommendation. They did agree to reduce the overall foot candles on site and the intensity of the lighting. It is just that site uniformity with kind of having the distinct car wash, store entrances, canopy, and then the sidewalk areas to be adequately lit. It just wasn't really feasible to get down all the way to the targets when you considered the site as a whole. But they have substantially reduced their typical lighting package in response to the neighborhood concerns.
Thank you.
Yep. And then just real quick, it is their typical store design. They already meet our architectural standards as far as using the high-quality masonry materials. They do use and are proposing to use their typical standing seam, green roof. Staff doesn't really have any objections to that. They're also pulling in their typical kind of residential roof style that's more complimentary to the residents that are nearby.
Any, any concerns from the neighbors on any like car wash noise or?
Yeah, so Quick Star has agreed to limit the hours of operation for the car wash to ensure they do stay in compliance with the city's noise ordinance. So it will not operate between ten PM and seven AM. But there are sound studies which were actually based, I believe, on their older equipment model that would tend to be a little louder, was meeting the city's requirements during daytime hours. And it was just a little bit in a gray area if it would a hundred percent meet the overnight hours, since we didn't have the exact sound study for the equipment they have. But it should be a lower intensity sound as the equipment gets upgrades and it's more, I guess, sound efficient. So yes, we do have that information, and there, there was concerns, but it shouldn't have an outsized impact compared to the typical noise that is already really taking place on Hickman. Additionally, the drier location for a lot of the noise should be more towards the exits that is oriented away from the residents.
And then back to the fence. Quick Star is paying for the install, assuming the HOA is taking care of the maintenance. And if there's replacement damage needed, that, that's all the HOAs.
Yes, yep. And all the permitting and everything would be required by Waukees since it would be a Waukees residential fence.
Has, Michael, has Waukees agreed to that, right? So there are no surprises with the fencing for the residents in Waukees?
I don't know of any restrictions Waukees has that would prohibit a residential subdivision like that from installing a fence. I don't know if the HOA has actually filed any applications yet, though. But the city of Waukees did reach out to get some information from us, and so they didn't raise any concern with that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Is there anyone in the chamber here to address on this issue?
We do have Casey Bondur present representing Quick Star if you all did have any questions for them.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is Casey Bondur, and I am a real estate manager for Quick Trip and Quick Star. I wanted to first start off by thanking the mayor and council members for reviewing our site plan tonight. You may be aware, oh, and I also wanted to say thank you to city staff, too. They've been great. We've had several meetings and discussions with them. So to get us to this point, so thank you very much. We do have several Quick Star locations in the Des Moines metro, but we don't in Clive yet. So I thought I would first start off with kind of just a summary of our company. So Quick Trip was founded in nineteen sixty-five, and we had our first store in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. It was owned by the Zetlow and Hanson families until two thousand, when the Zetlow family bought out the Hanson family. And it continues to be family owned by four generations of the Zetlow family, today with over eight hundred stores in four states, which it'll soon to be six states. And unlike other convenience store chains, Quick Trip and Quick Star is vertically integrated. So vertical integration is where all stages of production of a good, from the acquisition of the raw materials to the retailing of the final product are controlled by one company. This helps in removing excess costs and helps control quality. At our La Crosse campus, we have a dairy plant, sweets bakery, bread and bun bakery and kitchen where approximately eighty percent of our offerings in our stores are made. So deliveries are made from our La Crosse campus to each store every day to provide the freshest products to our guests. So for example, milk, we receive the milk from a dairy farm in the morning. It's brought to our La Crosse campus. And it is processed and put into the gallons, plastic gallons that we have a blow mold for to make. And then they are put on a truck and in the morning sent out to our stores every day. So. So anyway, I know Amanda has kind of gone over everything here, but I'm more than willing to answer any other questions that you may have.
Good. I did have one question that you triggered. Do you have a typical time for your deliveries? And the reason why I ask is we're right near some residential homes. A lot of those delivery trucks, if they're backing up and they got a lot of beeping noises, and if that's happening at four o'clock every morning, can be a bit disruptive to those residents. Can you kind of expound on that a bit?
Yeah, I, we don't, I don't have an exact answer. I know they do deliver in the morning, but it is coming from La Crosse, Wisconsin, so it's not going to be four AM, five AM, six AM. I think they try and get it there mid-morning usually.
I do think that's a very key question because we talked about it Nebraska Furniture Mart and some others of, you know, the, when the deliveries would be and the residents affected. So I would like a follow-up on it. I guess, you know, I know we're voting tonight, but a follow-up on that and to see if we can't work with those residents on having those trucks come in at a reasonable time.
I think it's a bit of a balance, too, because if you, you get towards that school time too, and there's a lot of kids that are going to school and moms and dads taking them to school, that becomes a problem, too, if you got a big truck trying to turn in, right? It's everybody's trying to get out on the Hickman or something.
When Ted said he, she spurred a question for him, I thought he was going to ask about the Bonbons. And that type of thing and the dairy.
But mid-morning, mid-morning.
Mid-morning would be good. You can confirm that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Other, other questions?
Otherwise, what we're looking for is approval of site plan.
Move through all the site plan.
Second. Motion, second, approve the site plan. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote and would the clerk please post that vote? That passes five to zero.
Would the resolution approving the public improvements?
Second. Motion, second on the resolution, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post those votes? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Good luck. Amanda, you're back up here with Shadow Creek Peak.
Yes, so tonight we have the second consideration of the Shadow Creek Peak rezoning. There has been no changes since the public hearing to either the development concept. That was a general representation or to the zoning change and development agreement that was proposed. So with that, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Amanda. Would someone like to move the second?
Move the ordinance number 1135, Shadow Creek Peak rezoning. Have been considered by the council, we vote on for passage, part of its final adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for the second reading. Further discussion.
Can I ask a quick question? Who's the developer on this again?
Um, so Dreamscape Home Builders.
I'll be abstaining.
Okay, very good. Further discussion. Seeing none with the council, please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? Second reading. And that passes by a vote of four with one abstention. Thank you, Amanda. Next, we're going to look at the third consideration of some of the zoning ordinances. I know when I've been whooped.
There we go.
Blake.
Eric Council, thank you for your time this evening. We're just going to provide a little recap of how we got here. April 20th, we started presentations with Building Code Appeals Board. We presented 10 of the 13 construction trade related codes to the board. Received approval from them to bring those forth to you folks for presentation. May 4th, we opened up with the public hearing, went through the codes, wrote down a few, few notes, came back on May 25th, answered a few questions, went through a few diagram situations. We're back tonight for the third consideration. We have not received any comments, concerns from citizens, builders, or residents. At this time, staff would recommend approval. Any questions?
Questions?
Seems like as we've discussed, egress windows, Mike, I know you had a lot of concerns about that and and we want to continue that discussion. Do you have any further?
I know when I've been whooped. And you can't win them all. But I do think that, you know, my objections are on the record from past. I'll actually make the motion on this one to move it along because I know.
Before you do, I think, I mean, having heard some of the comments from, from last time, I think it's important that, you know, we, we look at some of those other solutions that we can offer to those homeowners, right? And so, yeah, I think that should become the next step for us.
I think that'll be a big part of our discussion, strategic planning ordinance for sure.
And that satisfies, Eric, your comment is that satisfies me of saying that the board looks like it's in favor of taking a serious look at those programs for all homeowners throughout the entire city and taking that serious in the next step, funding it. I'm opposed to that piece, but, but I'll make a motion that the ordinance number 1134 be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted. Second, motion second for the third consideration. Further discussion.
I'd just like to say I do think that the safety information that was presented before is very compelling. And I am very supportive of trying to look for ways to help get it done in the examples where financial barriers are in place. But we did hear that the actual cost difference is pretty minimal overall. So I think maybe we can be in a position to identify some ways to be of help. And if it ends up being a reason that it saves a life of a person who's in the residents or a firefighter trying to get there, that's worth a lot to me.
It's a little, I agree, right? And we're not going to sit and argue when the public safety flag is always waved, right? It's a tight rope for folks to sit, to go against it. But I'm telling you, it doesn't work with me because you can go down the road of public safety and the safety of homeowners to the point that we're all in tents because you can get out faster. Or, you know, anything crazy thing that comes up, if it's a barrier, it's a barrier. And we've got to see an, some kind of happy medium. So we can keep putting regulations on individuals. Where I said, you know, the last time I mean it, I didn't do any research, but I don't, I don't believe in all those statistics that, you know, I could throw out an opposite statistics on, on safety and how people died in their houses. And they died in bed, not trying to get out the window of their bedroom. And that's a fact, right? I mean, you guys showed that. So there is a point that we've got to say enough is enough and putting barriers in front of people. Especially when you're picking a, really a neighborhood and putting that barrier on the neighborhood, because when you did the overlay of the red zone that it affected, it was one neighborhood. That east side neighborhood, and we've got to be careful doing that. So anyways, I made the motion. I'm going to be in favor of this as long as we look at these programs and are very reasonable when folks put, you know, I looked at my windows, they can, they're okay. So I'm not even fighting for me, and I will be replacing my windows because I've already ordered them. But it doesn't even affect me, right? So, but it does affect a huge area of your city. And we all represent this city as a whole, not as precincts. So that concerns me. With that, I'll move on. Any further discussion? When the council please vote. And will clerk please post that? With that, we have a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1134 is declared to be enacted.
Thank you.
Vote.
Thank you.
Next, we just need a simple motion on a pay request.
Move approval.
Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote and will clerk please post a vote? And that passes by a vote of four in favor with one abstention. All right, now we're going to talk about body cams. Lieutenant.
Mayor Council, good evening. I'm excited to be here tonight, talking about body cameras and in car systems. Pete, how do I get my PowerPoint up? Yeah, I'm ready.
I'm not gonna take any jokes about that. There you go.
Thank you. So if you recall, in 2022, this was an action agenda item that you discussed as strategic planning. And we put it into FY24. So that's why I'm here tonight. We have an older supply of body cameras and our in car systems are coming up to be new as well. So we are finally at that point where it's time to make wholesale changes. Just a little bit of history on our, our in cars and our body cams. We started our in car program in 1999, so it's been a little over two decades that we've had in car systems. We started out with VHS tapes. I don't know if you've ever seen our old evidence storage room. At one point, we had about 1,000 VHS tapes in there that we would just cycle through. In about 2008, we switched to a digital system. So all our video is digitally recorded in the cars. It would automatically download onto a server that we maintained on premises. That took away the need for all those videotapes. But we've, we've got an even larger supply now of compact discs that we have to store. So our body camera, we started our body camera program, we started about 2012. We're the first in the metro to field body cameras. We actually started out with that little guy that the hand is holding. That's a Scorpion. Not much data could be recorded on it. Battery life was not very good. After about 20 minutes, you'd have to go back and recharge the battery and download the video. So over time, those things have gotten better. We've used the V-views that you see in the middle. We've also used the L3 on the right side of that at the bottom there. That's our current vendor right now is L3. We've been with them for quite a while. But we're starting to see some issues with our body cameras, which prompts our change. Our current system, so you'll hear me say Safelite, COBAN, and L3, those are all kind of synonymous with each other. They're all the same. They operate under the same umbrella of COBAN. COBAN is, is our in car vendor right now. Everything that we have from them, like I say, downloads digitally, backs up on a disk on a daily basis. We'll get two or three discs in a day, depending on how much video that we, we have downloaded. You can see that picture I just took was disc number 9,983. We just went over 10,000 discs today. That's all backed up data that comes off of the server, backs up to these discs, and then we have to store those. Next to that, disk is the burner. That's, we had to replace that a couple of years ago. You may remember that, along with the server that we had. We, it's just the system that we have now. It's, it's kind of antiquated. It's getting outdated. Everything downloading to a dedicated server and then burning up to disk. So our body cameras, again, those are downloaded from a docking station when we come in. The one I'm wearing right now is the model that we currently field. They're assigned to each, each officer. We now have a supply that, that we can provide each officer their own. That initially helped us with battery life. It helped us with the ability to record more interactions. But these cameras are now past their end of, of life use, which is again prompting our need to change. We did receive at one point 106 body cameras from Dubuque when they upgraded their system. That's helped us to continue using these cameras through at least the last 12 months. This has been an ongoing process for about 12 months now that we've been looking at different vendors. And when we looked at what we needed, there were seven questions that we came up with and we got the seven answers that we needed. But we were really looking for something that was easy, an easy way to compile all our data and easy to get back to it. We wanted security for our data, which I know we have our firewalls built in, but I don't know that what we have is CGIS or FBI compliant. Those are answers that I haven't gotten back yet, but those are things that we are looking for, just more secure data. Again, the electronic backup, we're looking for a vendor that can give us some warranty support, which we are kind of lacking from COBAN. Again, another reason that prompted us to start looking into this, the change of the program. But we were really looking for, for backend features that we could get from some of these vendors. Things like video synchronization and redaction of video, the ability to blur out faces, for example, or blur out something on the video that maybe shouldn't be released to the public. Those are things we can't do right now with the system that we have. I think we've all seen the benefits of having these video cameras. The city of Clive and the Clive Police Department is dedicated to transparency and openness. I think we've shown that with videos that we have released. Certainly there are things that we can't release, but these are the backbones of that transparency. It provides context to situations that, that might otherwise be spun a different direction by rumor or by opposing views. So that's the importance of these. These are oftentimes better than eyewitnesses. I can testify to the fact that video footage has protected me in the past over what somebody else saw. So there's all these different reasons that come into it. And I will just mention that one inset photo. This was taken from a case that we had here in Clive. It was an individual with a gun that was running from an officer. And if I were to show you the video clip, you will never see that gun in the video clip. The officer could see it on the scene, but you can't see it in the video until we slow it down and go frame by frame. And if you look, that blue is the suspect's back and arm. The shiny zigzaggy lines that you can see are taser wires. But if you look down just next to his arm, you see the outline of a firearm that he dropped. Those are things that video helped us, help us show when we can slow them down and go frame by frame. So just a few reasons of the importantness. I'm almost done, I promise. We did look at several different vendors. We tried to get field tests done with all these vendors. Most of them did not work out. The one that we had a good amount of success with was GTAC. We have a local vendor that we've been working with, so we had great support from them. They are based out of Arizona, but the, we have a vendor that's local here in Urban Dale. So it was very easy to work with them. Again, Safelite or COBAN, that's our current vendor. We tried to get a field test done with them. We weren't able to work that out. Neither were we able to with Axon, and I never got a quote back from WatchGuard. So we, we did check with multiple vendors. So we are recommending that we go with the GTAC system. It's, it's price wise, it's kind of middle of the road, but it does everything that we're looking for in a body worn and an in car system. It's giving us the cloud based storage. It's FBI and criminal justice compliant. We get that redaction. We get the video sync, the video sync automatically. We also get transcription service with that. So what is heard on the video can be transcribed and, and put on the video itself. So ability to charge body cameras while we're in the car, that's an issue that we have is battery life. These cameras, we can't do that with, with the GTAC system. We will be able to do that. If you looked at the quote that is in there, it comes with eBay docking stations. If you've seen our system now, you know, we don't, we have individual charging ports to put the cameras in. So that would clean up our, our patrol area a little bit. And it also gives us a body cam refresh. What that does would allow us to extend our body cam program out essentially to six years. We would have a five year run on electronic data storage, so cloud and all the backend software. And we could essentially run our in car cameras out to about 10 years, which is what we're doing now and not have too many issues with, with any of the systems. We would have warranties that would take us out to those periods as well, so.
Real quick, the, the body worn cameras, do they have, how do they upload to the cloud, I guess? Do you have to bring them back to the station and dock them? Or do they actually upload while your, while officers are?
They will upload through the docks, but I believe Trace and Trace. Kendrick, no, come on up. Trace Kendrick's our vendor from Sector. And he could probably answer that better than I can, but I believe they can upload over the internet or through wifi.
Well, Mike's Trace Kendrick, I'm a Sector Technology Group. We're just on their side of Hickman, on Justin Drive in Urban Dale. I do want to correct one thing. GTAC video system is actually out of Bloomington, Minnesota, not Arizona. Because they had one of our competitors out of Arizona, so that's my extra. But how they offload?
I think we talked to someone in there.
So these are wifi capable body cameras. We do have LTE, but then there's the extra cost of putting the air card, activating their card. So when they dock in the car, it'll download in the DVR on the car. The DVR on the car is a Windows based system, only one offered with that, where it's not proprietary or Linux or some other type of system where you can't get your data, access your data as easy as you can with the Windows system, MP4 files, if you want them back or anything. So what they do is they dock, they'll download your DVR and their external access points at the police department. It'll upload through there. The actual, the eight bay docks are a Windows machine. It'll come through the IT, the internet system in the police department to that eight bay dock, and there it'll upload to the cloud, to secure cloud. It's Microsoft Azure Cloud, geolocated multiple locations across the United States and meets all CGIS requirements.
The, the Windows machines, I'm assuming they're, they're hardened.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We got thousands and trunks of patrol cars all over the country.
I meant hardened from like antivirus firewall.
Yes. Yep, they need, like I said, they need all those CGIS requirements. I don't have those with me, but they are volumous. And they do meet all of those for security. Yep.
Yeah, Mark, good, good presentation right here, very comprehensive right here. One of the things that always concerns me with upgrades electronics is, is vendors that will discontinue supporting the, the products or a new subscription fee that pops up, something of that nature. Could you guys just address some of those?
Yeah, well, like, that's one of the reasons why we started looking at a new vendor. We had issues with equipment that we had and sent it in and got a note back that, hey, we're not supporting this anymore. So, okay, you're not supporting it. What do we do now? You got to buy the new thing. So that's one of the issues that we did have, Trace.
And this is a whole solution for that whole time. The, the one time cost for this covers everything for the length of the quote and the warranty purchased within it. It's unlimited data storage. There's, there's, and there is an upgrade to the backend coming, a very comprehensive upgrade that'll come sometime in August out in GTAC. There's no cost for that. Anything that comes out as far as an upgrade, another equipment will stay the same, but they do have built into this that refresh at three years. After about three years, body camera battery life starts to deteriorate. It's not a warranty issue. That's a wear issue. So what we offer if an agency wants it is at that three year mark to build in for a little extra cost, a refresh. And with that, they'll also be able to keep the old body cameras for backups and for extras as well. But there is no surprise charges. It's covered for the entire five years on the in car systems initially and six years on the body cameras.
What's the, sorry, what's the battery life on that?
What's the, sorry, what's the battery life on that?
10 to 12 hours at medium settings for video quality.
Any, any reoccurring fees at all with the quote?
No, it's all built into the quote. There are zeros. That's GTAC presents that way. And that's the way that our company, that's why we, GTAC is the only solution that we offer for in car systems and body cameras because of their transparency. And because it's just, it's easy to explain and to market.
Depending on the payment strategy the council approves, there could be, could set up that we have a recurring payment over the course of. There is an advantage financially to pay once.
With that one-time fee, we looked at his round 30,000 funding sources on that and how do we pay for it?
We, we'll need to talk about that when Matt's back in the office.
Do you mind if I speak to that?
Sure.
Great. Okay, so in the, in the packet, one of the, on the synopsis that Mark and and Chief Benema had written is we're looking at the capital improvement or capital equipment plan. Each of the directors right now are looking at all of their equipment and redoing the CEP for this year. So right now they're in the process of doing that. In order to do the one-time payment, we're recommending that we would have to do an amendment to the budget next year. So this is FY24. So the payment would, would actually not be made until after July 1. And then we would have to reorganize the capital equipment plan. There is funding obviously for you know, in reserves for this, just because, again, you saved dollars on, on purchasing of vehicles. So we always have a little bit of surplus in there to work with in order to, to make that work for the actual fiscal year. So we won't be, but we will have to adjust the, the budget for that.
Is there any potential federal money for?
Federal money, I guess we haven't really discussed that.
There, that one time there was a grant for body cameras. It was not much. I mean, it was 50% of the cost of X number of cameras, depending on the size of the agency. That, that was something that we looked at, but we.
Right. Federal government's throwing money around like it's water. So I mean, it might be worth looking at at least.
I'm always looking, but it's, it's finding is the harder part.
Right, right.
So.
So last question, can you, one of you speak to the warranty and what it covers and what it doesn't cover, things of that nature?
So the warranty cares anything other than where. If it breaks, I don't want a hot breaks. Lieutenant Rayber just called me and says, we need a body camera. I called Bloomington. They overnight a new body camera, put the other one in the box and send it back. It's advanced replacement, no questions asked. Now, the one thing we don't cover is, is that if it's, if a battery starts deteriorating in 24 months, we're going to replace that camera. That's not where we are seeing it across the board with the current battery technology. At about 36 to 40 months, you'll start seeing an hour or two drop off. That's one thing. It's not covered warranty, hence the refresh built into it.
Michael, our body cams, have we looked at state bids? Are they provided into the state bid program?
There, not that I have found, there's no state bid for body cams. And you'll find there's several vendors, you, depending on who you ask, there's reasons why they chose those vendors. But there's no state bid on them.
Surprise Axon didn't back you. They're, they're very large in this industry right there. So surprised you didn't get more.
Well, and I should say, we did get a quote from Axon. We wanted to do a field test with them and that never worked out.
What are the agencies in the metro?
Polk City's using them, Boone, Mason City, Clear Lake. Nebraska State Patrol is probably the largest agency in the Midwest.
For a fishing game, which is, I think, actually the largest Jackson, Mississippi. I know they're not, those aren't in the metro. But there was not a vendor until Sector started about a year ago, 14 months ago with GTAC in, in the metro area. We have several agencies looking at quotes though. For GTAC usually comes in a very affordable and a very robust solution for it.
Other questions?
Do you guys rep any other products or?
No other body camera in car. We do anything law enforcement technology related. I don't know if you guys were part of the, we outfitted one of Clive's patrol cars at about a 75% discount to help showcase what we can do and to partner with one of our local police departments here. So we build, everything from building police cars all the way up to citywide technology, that gunshot detection, surveillance cameras, license plate recognition cameras, things like that, anything in between.
The last drone we bought, we bought through Sector.
And I don't know if this helps or hurts me, but I've known Mark for like 17 years and he always, he's got my personal cell phone. He can always get ahold of me if he needs anything.
That's probably not good.
I'm retired law enforcement from here.
Other questions? Again, this was just a discussion item. Is there any concern with proceeding? So.
At what point are we making a decision on this then?
Well, I've decided that I think this is the way we need to go. It's just a matter of council gave him approval for us to place the order. As a, probably about eight weeks, eight to 10 weeks.
Eight weeks out on the hardware. I think we have you tentatively just holding a spot in our installation. I have to pull up on the computer, I think in September.
The sooner we can do it to July 1, the better it would be.
I want to make sure that based on the questions you all had tonight, what Liz explained as well, I want to make sure that we are satisfying all of your concerns about how we're going to make this work with the CEP and understand the final number. And then we'll be coming back for the formal, formal action for the council to make.
Well, I think we need to understand what the impacts are. If we do the one time, you know, what's being pushed out as a result of that. So, because certainly there, there's a pretty significant savings there. And so that's appealing, but we need to know what, what are the downstream impacts to that. So.
We'll work with the vendor and police department to make sure that we keep this on a timeline because the biggest challenge, as I've understood from lieutenant, is that we have a product that is not just end of life, but it is actively failing on us. We're running through these used cameras that we got from Dubuque at a really worrying rate and we cannot, cannot send out officers without this technology. They've got to have it. And so moving this efficiently is going to also need to be important, but I think we've got the time to get it done.
And I think it was a magazine of about $60,000, the difference between. So I think we want to save that. To me, it comes down to where does PD cut? It's CP to get this, these dollars, right? And so it's, they've got to find the money in their budget. And not across the, not across the city. It's in the budget of PD that has got to come up with the money. And so if that, if I hear that in the, in a vote coming up, I'm in favor. Well, it'll come back to us, but it sounds like there's general consensus.
Thanks.
Very good. I thank you all for your time. I will extend the invitation. If you want to see the shop, get a tour. I see what we do there. And having additional questions, Mark has all my contact info. I can leave, leave cards if you guys want me to. But you're more welcome to come over and check, check us out too in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our reports. Pete will start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. We continue to work on research for House File 718, the property tax legislation. I encourage you to follow the League of Cities. They've gotten their recent City View Magazine a pretty good write-up about what the effects of the bill are going to be. One, beyond just the revenue effects, one thing I'm watching very carefully is how are our counties preparing to do that communication in March about what property tax bills are going to look like for residents? Because that new event can be quite a trigger for a lot of our residents and businesses if they get something that is not clearly written. So I'll be reaching out to Polk County, Dallas County to see what are their early thoughts on how, what that might look like. Also get that information so we can pair it with what the city is going to have out and about for folks to reference as well. So that we tell an accurate, timely and clear story for residents when we get to this, these March dates. More to come. Later this month, we will be getting going with our trail etiquette campaign and starting to promote the Clive Festival. Both those are especially with Clive Festival already moving forward. We're excited about hopefully good weather and a really fantastic celebration with the community when we get to mid-July. The utility rate changes are all queued up and ready to go in our software. We are testing to make sure that those new bills, once they get printed, are rendering correctly. We've got a couple more additional steps to take to make sure that that's done, but we've got the time. We will be making the reads on the 15th and then that sets in motion the process of getting bills printed and getting them ready to get out the door. So a very important set of weeks here in June, so that we get the July bills absolutely correct. But I want to compliment my colleagues in utility billing and the IT department and the community department. Folks have been working very well together to do this very precise and careful work. We're going to get it right when we get to July. Last, work continues at Little Walnut Creek on the sewer. I'll be driving out there tomorrow just to see how far along they're going, but they are active between our border with Urbandale over Talisus Road. Haven't been hearing a lot from the neighborhood so far about that. I did send out an update at the very end of May to let folks know that they would be seeing some more construction activity in that area. But thus far, it seems like everybody is understanding what's happening and are tolerating the disruptions. Finally, the booms that we've been hearing in the community. Chief Boyle has been good to work with on reaching out to all of the places where we think those sounds could have been coming from. And after double checking with a number of businesses, it seems like our likely suspect is fireworks.
Really?
Yes.
It's odd to me because it's just one. One, just at 10 o'clock, whatever, right? We've talked about, one boom. And then nothing follows for a day or two. And then there's one boom. I don't know if you're, if it's in other neighborhoods or.
We've had some that have kind of stretched the corridor. One night when there might have been shots fired that, or those could have been something else as well, but we'll keep researching and keep staying in touch with folks. Chief Boyle did note over at Lanan right now, over by the Harbox Center, there's quite a bit of firework debris over there. So that may be evidence of where some of this stuff is coming from. We'll keep watching for it and patrols keep going around, looking for it as well. That's back on Monday.
Can't wait, I'm sure. Quick follow-up on property taxes. The register listed a number of delinquent properties in the city of Clive. Seemed like a very, very long list. Is that list longer than normal? Do we know or can we check into that?
I will check into that to see how this compares to previous years, unless one of my colleagues knows off the top of their head. They may not have seen that list yet, but we'll get an answer for you there.
Quick update on DART. We had another commission meeting where they are moving forward with the, the second site for the facilities. You know, as we've talked about before, they need to, they need to keep that moving forward so they don't lose those federal funds that have been allocated. There was a budget request made along that line to, they have to redo a portion of the design now that it's on a new site. It was a more significant cost than I, I thought it was going to be. It was in the amount of, I think, three, not to exceed 325,000. And that's for a 30% design. So that still means there's additional design work after that. So it, yeah, it's adding up pretty quick. So you know, there, there are discussions amongst the commission members though about if, and, and one thing I should point out is that the month, that 325,000 was already set aside as part of the design. It's just, it's going to eat into that design budget quicker than I think they anticipated. But there are commission members, myself included, that would support pairing back the facility to, to kind of right-size. I think was the term that was used to make sure that facility is not getting just way out of control.
It's approaching $100 million.
Yeah, yeah.
It's over 100.
Yeah, it's like 106, I think.
And how much money is available?
Not 100%.
Yeah. What is it, 30?
I, I don't, I'll have to follow up. I, I don't, I don't think it's at the 50% mark yet. I, but I'll have to follow up to find the right.
It all went haywire in January. We were saving money in DART and we were.
We changed reps.
Was on 67 million to build the building and now it's 108.
You know, I, I'm just checking all the boxes, whatever we can get. Now, and then on the, on the CEO side, you know, I, I know on the last meeting it was a little difficult to give an update, but they, they are going back out to search. There are a couple of internal candidates that, or I'm sorry, not internal candidates, but local candidates that, that we want to, that the search committee wants to approach. But you know, nothing, nothing solidified. But I think there, there will be an update more along that line on the next commission meeting. So hopefully for the next, next meeting.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Yeah. I am happy to report that the MPO exec was able to have a meeting with no drama. Regular transportation stuff. Selection committee has been formed by Chair Andaway and that process is just kicking off. In the meantime, Dylan Molnix is serving as our interim and he's doing, he's doing a good job already. He's met with each of the exec members individually. Putting in place some, some, you know, some changes that I think are positive. So I think we're back on track and hopefully we'll, we'll move forward with very little drama.
I had a question for you about that. I heard there might be interest in trying to pursue people who've been at the DOT to move into that leadership role. That doesn't really seem like a very good.
I hadn't heard that. I'm not saying that's not true, but it's not been brought up at exec.
Okay.
I haven't heard that. So the selection committee is just getting started. I think they maybe had their first meeting this week. So.
Just had curiosity. Well, we'll talk offline. I just seem like DOT is transportation, but.
It's a whole lot different than planning.
Well, I would be interested to get your opinions on that so that I can take that back with me.
Yeah. Anything else to it?
That's it.
Eric.
I assured previously that Catch the Morning is one of the awards for their marketing campaigns promoting Iowa. So they've done a great job there. But Matt.
Susan.
I appreciated the stability workshop that Drake hosted. Both Ted and I attended that and it was effective. And I am going to be going into Washington DC next week representing Clive invited to a meeting at the White House on building a better Iowa. Where we're supposed to talk about things that are going well in the community.
Michael. I wish I had something to share with you all, but nothing tonight.
It's for the best.
Counsel.
No report, Your Honor.
Very good. Anything else for the good of the order? Yes. Suggestions about Zion.
Very good.
Love it. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the correspondence. Anything, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 7:27.